Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item two, roll call.
Nelson.
Orson.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Wunschel.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Moriarty.
Here.
Item three, tonight we have the pleasure of having Shannon Landauer here, who is the CEO of the Iowa Lakes Development Corporation, who's one of our key economic development partners as it relates to commercial and industrial development. And first of all, welcome Shannon to the area. Shannon's new to the corridor mid-July, is that right?
Yes, early July, thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Welcome here, and we look forward to your presentation.
Yes, thank you. Initially here tonight, I really just wanted to come in to... Yeah, better. Just want to introduce myself and give a little bit of an update with what's been going on at the corridor. First and foremost, as the mayor said, coming in early July, it really was about the transitions, catching up on those things that in the interim, we needed to get caught up on. As many of you saw, Brian has left our team as well, end of July, so we do have a gap to fill there. We did last week have the Okoboji Entrepreneurial Institute going on up at the lakes, so another great week of bringing kids in from across the state to talk about some projects that they've been working on, to experience the lakes area, and meet with a lot of leadership. I enjoy that a lot, meeting everyone. We've been really busy with our business retention expansion program. Approximately 40 companies throughout the corridor are visited with this program in alignment with the best of Iowa. So all of that data is collected, it's confidentially entered, and then compared, so we can take a look at benchmarking ourselves in the corridor against the state. What we do in those visits, though, is not just, not just out to visit and say hello. We want to make sure that our companies are strong, that if there are some assistance points, that we're helping out with those types of things. And as you can guess, some of the challenges are around labor, supply issues, things like that, that are pretty common. But we also have some companies that have done well with COVID. They've seen new product lines, they've been able to thrive. So we are still in various stages of COVID recovery throughout the corridor, but all in all, doing well. That provides an example to share. You know, often we're asked about what it is we do, and how do we determine if the investments into the corridor are worth the money. And one example we have is, you know, an undercapacity manufacturing facility within the region is looking for a little bit of assistance. So we're able to, through our networks, connect with companies that may look at some co-location, they may work at, look at some contract work. So, you know, the work that we do hopefully can provide some stability for those employees, it may help save companies, and those things are hard to monetize. And so just thought that's a great opportunity when we're talking about the retention work, to talk a little bit about what it is the corridor does that way. We are really doing a lot of planning internally. We're taking a look at those marketing pieces, the strategies that we have around workforce, to evaluate what's working, where we need to go. There isn't a labor solution we can just provide, we know that. But we also know that the region has something really special to offer that you don't find everywhere in Iowa. Each of our communities are strong, they've all got their own unique assets, and we need to do a great job telling that story. Also, there's a lot going on in the housing realm, seems like there's never enough, but we have offered support for five of the workforce housing tax credit projects that'll be going on throughout the region. So we're excited to see continued momentum with those projects as well. Resident recruitment is something, too, that we're really taking a look at. You've seen the Get a Lakes Life marketing, as I mentioned before, workforce, we're trying to really bring some of those things full circle. Make sure that we don't have any disjointed marketing pieces, that they're all comprehensive. The messaging is going out there, and then we also have the internal support that we need to, when people are taking a look at the region, to find out how they might fit in. So essentially, a lot of that relates to the business culture, the business climate in the region. We are seeing some momentum in Iowa, certainly coming from neighboring states where business climate looks a little bit different. We are seeing some industrial-sized projects that are starting to move. So we're trying to do a great job of balancing all of that as well, and making sure that we're finding sites or buildings that are what's being requested by those opportunities. And finally, I won't go through the list of work that SCDC is doing, but we have had a couple meetings, myself with Phil Christie, and then the group has met to talk about the projects for Spencer, and how we keep moving Spencer forward. You know, that relates to everything from housing to some things that the city's been working on, and then certainly looking at new projects. So all in all, I look forward to being out, I look forward to updating you guys fairly regularly and working with the teams here. But tonight was really about introducing myself and letting you know what I've been up to these first few weeks on the job. So certainly, if you have any questions, though, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any surprises so far?
You know, this, it's a strong region. I think a lot of things are pretty comparable to what we're seeing, but I would, I would say there's always surprises. You know, when you're hearing COVID stories, it's been really interesting to hear about some of the resiliency and ways that some of the companies out here, I mean, that's Iowa and the Midwest, right? We just figure out how to get it done, we don't wait for help. But I think that we're going to see a lot of opportunity that some other states lagging just don't have yet. So again, I point back to that business-friendly mentality, and when it comes to even local government, that's what's being sought right now, those sites that are shovel-ready, the turnkey buildings, and the welcoming mentality when it comes to code enforcement, those types of things.
Any other questions for Shannon?
Shannon, I've always wondered if...
George, sorry, George, you want to put your microphone?
Thank you. I've always wondered if we put enough effort into convincing certain organizations in our community or companies that they maybe should consider expanding, and helping them with that process. Is that something that you're considering?
You know, that's an important part of the work, when you look at the, where expansion comes from, where your growth comes from. It's those that are here, and they know it, and they love it. You know, some economic development organizations look for those big fish, but when those big fish leave, you're in trouble. There's a lot of tools right now for expansion projects. Unfortunately, so many of these conversations are coming down to labor. So, you know, it really, it really is about getting that workforce pipeline developed maybe a little sooner. You know, starting the work and the mentality of coming home and maybe staying home at younger ages. But you're exactly right, we really do want to focus on those current existing employers and helping them reach their goals.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Shannon? Thanks for being here. We know your schedule's super busy, and we appreciate all the time that you spend with us and staff and in the community.
Happy to be here, thanks for having me.
Item four is the consent agenda. For A, approval of the city council minutes of August 2nd, 2021. B licenses, there are none this evening. C is a motion to approve purchase of a Polaris Ranger XP 1000 North Star Premium UTV unit from Okoboji Motorsports for the police department for $23,338.25. It should be noted, I've offered, if we have to test drive it to make sure it's safe, I'm happy to do that. D is a motion to approve purchase of four permanent picnic tables for the East Leach Skate Park area, and 15 campfire rings for the East Leach Park campground from Pilot Rock Incorporated for $9,318. This is a CIP item. E is a resolution authorizing and directing the temporary closing of portions of City Street East 5th from First Avenue East to Second Avenue East in the city of Spencer, as requested by Seasons Center for their September 23rd, 2021 event. F is a resolution setting a date of meeting at which it is proposed to approve a development agreement with Shoneman Brothers Company, including annual appropriation tax increment payments. G is a resolution setting a date for the meeting at which it is proposed to approve a tax development agreement with New Tech Incorporated, including annual appropriation tax increment payments. H is a resolution to provide for a notice of hearing on proposed plans and specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the 2021 West Fourth Street and 32nd Avenue Storm Sewer Improvement Projects, with a hearing date on September 7th, 2021, and a letting date of September 16th, 2021, with the review of bids and possible award on 9/20 of 2021. And that concludes the consent agenda. First by Bill, second by Lauren. Any discussion or questions on these items?
I'd just like to, or say, we're happy to see the development out there on the north end of town with the two businesses that are, that are building new property, or new buildings out there. And looks nice to see some building going on out there.
Thank you, Ron. Anyone else? Hearing done, vote by machine, please.
Orson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item five, old business, as discussed in the previous meeting, last council meeting. 5A is an ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter 3, Section 9, Subsection B of the Spencer City Code concerning one-way, specifically easterly traffic on 13th Street, east of 10th Avenue East. This is the second filing.
I move the ordinance.
First by George. Second by Tracy. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Bill?
The only question I have, I, we live close by there, and we are, I'm under the assumption that school buses will also be required to turn right when they come out of 15th, because in the past, a number of them go south as well as north, that's why I'm asking the question. Okay, so buses are going to have to do their thing as well. That was my only question. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Ron, did you have one?
Yeah, and I was just going to tell the chief, maybe in that Sep, first September meeting, maybe kind of give us a detail on how it worked and stuff, so we can keep updated on that. All right, thanks, chief.
All right. Any other questions on the second filing? Hearing done, vote by machine, please.
Orson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. In the interest of getting this on the books before school starts, so that it can be enforced, I would entertain a motion on 5B to waive the final filing and proceed to the final consideration.
I'll make a motion to waive the final and proceed to the final consideration.
First by Ron. Second by Bill. Any discussion? Is this where you want the chief to come up now? Go ahead.
No, he's, we had to approve it before he could go, right?
So I just say, chief, since it's not going to be the next month, can you come up and just explain to the public, too, and some of the changes? I don't know if we got a drawing, we had a drawing last time, it was...
So basically, you're going to be going eastbound on East 13th Street, which is south of the middle school there. You're going to go eastbound, and then you're going to go around the middle school on the east side. You're going to drop your students off there, and then you're going to go, and you're going to exit the middle school going westbound on West 15th Street. When you reach 10th Avenue, it is right turn only, so even the buses have to make, and go to the north there. There'll also be, we're going to put a rolling stop sign out there on 14th Street as well, and slow that traffic and get that safer out to school, the safest, try to make it as safe as is possible. So, yeah, it's exactly opposite of what we had last year, what they, what the school did. So we're trying to speed up the process for the students and the parents to be dropped off, and so they can exit as an accelerated fashion.
So how soon before signs will start going up?
The post, a lot of the posts are in already. And so I know Spencer Schools was already trying to do the promotional video, so it's ready for their conferences ahead of time, so that way we can go ahead and get to that, get that out to the parents. We'll also have Officer Hanson, and I will be out to the middle school that first week to two weeks out, and just making sure that everything is flowing normal, and trying to keep tabs on what's going on. So if we need to make some quick modifications, something's not working, we're going to get it addressed.
Thank you, Donovan. Any other questions? Hearing done, vote by machine, please.
Orson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item 5C is an ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter 3, Section 9, Subsection B of the Spencer City Code concerning one-way easterly traffic on 13th Street, east of 10th Avenue East. This would be the third and final filing. First by Bill. Second by Tracy. Any discussion or questions? Hearing done, vote by machine, please.
Orson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Just a note from me to the community on this particular item. We know it'll be frustrating the first couple of days, maybe even the first couple of weeks, but the goal, as stated in the first committee meeting, is to try to create the safest environment possible, most importantly, for the kids that are getting out in of the, in and out of the cars every day, but also the staff and just the general flow of traffic entering back onto 10th. So we're trying to solve a couple different problems with this one ordinance. So we appreciate everybody's time and attention to it, and working with the city on this and the school districts. Item six, new business. 6A is a motion to approve change order number two on Fourth Avenue Southwest recreational trail project, as required by the Iowa Department of Transportation to clean up any quantities that weren't paid at 100% net decrease of $14,327.38. First by George. Second. Second by Donovan. Any discussion, questions? Hearing done, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries. 6B is a resolution accepting work for Fourth Avenue Southwest recreational trail project. First by Ron, second by Donovan. Discussion, questions on this? Hearing done, vote by machine, please.
Orson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item 6C is an approval of a change order number two on the 2021 Spencer Seal Coat project for an increase of $4,083.70. First by Bill. Second by George. Discussion on this? Hearing done, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries. 6D is a resolution accepting work for the 2021 Spencer Seal Coat project. First by Lauren. Second by Ron. Got to be quicker, Donovan. Any questions or discussion on this item? Looks like the roads are getting traveled really well, that have the project done on them. So with that, vote by machine, please.
Orson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. 6E is a motion to adopt Spencer Municipal Airport Master Plan as prepared by Kaufman Associates Incorporated, as recommended by the Airport Board of Trustees. First by Lauren. Second by George. Any discussion?
I would like just to make a comment on that, that was phenomenal, a lot of detail in that study, extremely thorough. And I guess it's really, really great to see that for a community our size to be that forward-thinking with our air travel. So, great job down there, in my opinion.
Thank you, Lauren. Any other comments or questions? All right. Hearing done, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries. 6F is a resolution approving contract and performance bond for the 2021 7th Avenue Southwest Sewer Extension Project.
I'll make a motion approving that contract.
First by Ron. Second by Donovan. Any discussion on this item?
Question, I know that they're trying to move some property down there, timeframe and everything on this project.
Good evening, everyone. I believe, we don't have an updated schedule yet from him, but I believe submittals and certifications have been approved, and they're probably three to four weeks out on materials, so you're probably looking at the middle of September, it'd be the earliest he'd start.
All right, thank you.
It does have a fall completion date, though, so...
Thanks, Ross. Any other discussion or questions on this item? Hearing done, vote by machine, please.
Orson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. 6G is a motion to approve grant of permanent sanitary sewer easement with William Muller Revocable Trust in conjunction with the 2021 7th Avenue Southwest Sewer Extension Project. First by Tracy. Second by Bill. Discussion or questions on this? No, hearing done. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries. 6H is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of bid from contractor for property number 10 as part of the 2021 Spencer Substandard Housing Rehabilitation Program.
I move the resolution.
First by George. Second by Donovan. Any discussion or questions on this?
Maybe Ally can help us. I haven't heard too much about these, these properties going forward. Usually, we do about three or four of them a year, right? And, and it looks like we're only doing one this year, is that?
There's another one on here.
There is one more, yeah.
I don't have much information on this, I apologize. I haven't really been in too much work on the rehabilitation program, sorry.
Okay, I, yeah, I just knew it was underplanning usually, and...
Yeah.
We can answer.
Okay.
Typically, when we do it, we wait for a group of, grouping of three or four at a time, but in talking with Northwest, Northwest Planning, due to the ever-needing change of construction materials, and the fact that the house in this one has some, part of its project is weather-dependent, so before it gets cold out this winter, we're trying to get it done. So that's why we pushed this one outside of a normal group. But we did advertise again and stuff, so we're hoping the next round will have a better grouping again, but due to some of the circumstances going on right now, we just felt it was better to push this one project forward.
All right, Brian, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing done, vote by machine, please.
Orson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. 6I is a resolution accepting work covering the 2020 Spencer Substandard Housing Rehabilitation Program, project number eight.
I move the resolution.
First by George. Second by Bill. Any discussion or questions on this? Hearing done, vote by machine, please.
Orson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. And a thank you to the community members who own these properties, who participate in this program. One of the strategic goals of the council over the last eight to 10 years has been to target improving the conditions of some of our substandard housing units in town, and so just want to send a thank you out to those who participate in the program. 6J is a resolution approving contract and performance bond for the 2021 Spencer Police Department Parking Lot Replacement Project. First by Lauren. Second by Tracy. Any discussion or questions on this? Hearing done, vote by machine, please.
Orson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item 6K is an ordinance amending Title IX, Chapter 16 of the Spencer City Code concerning floodplain management, as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is the first filing. First by Bill. Second by Lauren. Alec, do you want to talk a little bit about this, what's in it for the community? And the need maybe to do this?
So, yes, definite need. Come November 5th, our new floodplain, the preliminary maps will go into effect. We need to have this ordinance in place before then, in order to stay compliant within our floodplain management. We don't really want that to be passed back to the state as far as floodplain management. Not that they don't do a good job, it's just better to have it in-house for us to be able to help our citizens a little bit better managing this. There weren't a whole lot of options on what we can actually change, it's pretty straightforward on what FEMA and DNR wants us to have in place.
Thank you. Alec, any questions or comments regarding this item? Hearing done, vote by machine, please.
Orson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item seven, engineers report. Ross, I assume you're covering that tonight?
I could hand it off to you if you want. Quick update, out at the airport, on the 2021 runway 1230 pavement rehabilitation project, foreigner asphalt sealers was in all last week, and also today. They have two crews working on that project. They're working on full and partial-depth concrete patching, and also joint sealing on runway 1230. They did a, they did a full airport shutdown today for six hours this afternoon to prep. Pretty much did some sawing for some patching work. The runway's open again now, and then they'll do another full shutdown from Wednesday morning to Friday morning to do some patching and get the intersection sealed. So hopefully, that'll just be a 48-hour shutdown, and they'll have the intersection work complete out there. They are hoping to be done by the end of the week, so, but they have quite a bit of work to do, so we'll see. We did have a pre-construction meeting for the Fourth Street HMA overlay project today. Blacktop Services is the general contractor. Pillar Construction is the subcontractor for the concrete. They've both indicated that they won't be in until after the fair to start the work. So you'll probably see some concrete work start the week after the fair, and then some milling and overlaying the next week. So it'll be the second week after the fair on that project. The only other project I had was on the 2021 sewer structure rehabilitation project. HydroClean is planning to come in the week of the 23rd to start rehab on the West Fourth Street lift station. That will require a lift station shutdown, which will be coordinated with the city and Villalua Water. So that, that takes some coordination and some manpower to shut down the lift station, so. Any questions?
What's the process of closing the airport for 48 hours? FAA has noticed, is notified?
They have to issue an order with the FBO out there, and then NOTAMs are sent out to other airports, and I believe they're probably filed online now. So, so it's not a huge deal, but it is, and then there's a lot of signage, and I would say big Xs on the ends of the runway, just to make sure people know that it's closed. So that's, that's kind of the, the quick version of closing the airport, but, yep. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Thanks, Ross. Item eight, city manager's report, or should I say interim? Item eight, city managers' report, or should I say interim city managers' report? Brian?
I don't have anything at this time.
All right. Any questions for Brian? All right. Item nine, mayor's report, just a few items. Uh, was requested to meet with Congressman Feenstra's representative, Wesley, probably gonna say his last name wrong, I believe it's Fopma, from Sioux Center, and I asked Nancy from Main Street and Alec to meet with us, and Mark White came in as well, uh, just to re, uh, cover over a couple of the items that we discussed. So the goal, number one, obviously, was with Congressman Feenstra being newly elected in the last cycle into office, getting out, meeting the communities and, uh, things of that nature, so we had a good discussion that way. And then also some of the specific things that we discussed, and if I miss anything, Alec and Mark, let me know. So, uh, Mark did a great job talking about Highway 18, the necessity to make it a Super Two from, uh, Clear Lake, I-35, over to here and continued west if possible, but just for the safety of the traffic, not only the cars, but specifically the semis and the commerce, the amount of load that's on that highway. And in fact, Mark, how, how many times, just the city of Spencer, do we run between Gretinger and Spencer?
Well, the only time we figure shine trucks would be around 48 operations.
Forty-eight out and backs, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, 48 out and backs per, yeah, per day, just, just in this isolated area, and so it's incredibly important. And because it is a US highway, uh, that's where the majority of the funding would be to continue that program. Also, we talked about the need for, uh, funding as we move forward with our downtown housing study. If there were programs available that would be beneficial for us to apply for as we look at renovating and establishing new or, um, updating places to stay downtown in our buildings. Uh, we have some that are currently occupied, some that could be occupied but might need some updating, and then some that would be just from the scratch, uh, projects, so we went over that need. Talked a little bit about our industrial park, uh, the Green Industrial Park with the new flood zone mapping. The 100-year floodplain lines have basically taken most of what's left for development and some of the areas that are already developed, and has put that in the 100-year floodplain. It was not previously in that floodplain, and so we've requested some financial help, if possible, to either help bring some of those properties up out, uh, or offer some incentive, incentives, if there are programs available for people to move in and businesses to move into that area. And so I know Lauren's passionate about that and has visited with our state representative, Megan Jones, and so we just want the community to know that we are in contact with not only our state legislators, but our federal legislators as well. And so specifically, as mayor, what I asked them to do was to have the congressman consider writing legislation in future sessions that would establish some funding opportunities for the programs that we could apply for in the development areas that we're doing in, around town. We also talked about some isolated, I would consider them blight areas or places where it's unsafe to live. These are properties that, uh, we're looking to do projects with. Uh, a lot of the federal projects are pretty substantial in their size, that you would apply for, like an entirely, you know, in, a big industrial area that's blighted, that you would renovate. Where here, we're a little more strategic, almost surgical, in the sense that we're talking about maybe a residential project here, a residential project there, and so the need to establish a program like that, I think, would not only be beneficial for Spencer, but we're in the same boat as a lot of communities here in the upper Midwest. So just wanted you to know that we are spending our time, uh, working on that. Met with Jessica, uh, to talk about our past city manager performance reviews that we've done, uh, historically here, just in case the questions come up during the interview process about how we've evaluated city managers previously. Uh, also talked about the COVID Task Force, so about a week and a half ago, the, the chatter amongst our, I would consider the remnants of our old COVID Task Force have started to fire back up because of some of the, uh, nationwide, you know, discussions that are happening. And so the hospital, obviously, is very in tune with that, and Jeff Messerol from the hospital does a good job updating us, and so we're looking at, just getting together for a fall update, looking at winter projections. There's nothing to report other than that. There's no, not that I'm aware of, no new, you know, rules or actions by any, you know, governors in our area or anything like that, but just wanted to let people know that it's, it's, it's in the rearview mirror, hopefully, uh, but we do wanna be prepared if something comes down the pipe again. The Main Street Ice Cream Social's happening tonight. If you haven't already, get out and get yourself some ice cream over on 5th. After the meeting, uh, we will be moving to a committee of the whole at the pool, so I believe it was last Wednesday morning. Is that right? Is that when we found out? Right before the agenda meeting, uh, Jared come in and, maybe it was Brian, said that we had a substantial leak, which is a problem if you're trying to keep water in a pool, and so it's one of the, uh, it's another big issue that we've had that we wanna talk about because the pool is moving towards the end of its natural life expectancy and, and as it relates to the, uh, master plan that was recently completed last year and looking at future expenditures, we thought it would be good not to just have a discussion about it as a council, but to actually physically go to the facility, walk around. I know there's some other things that Jared and Brian wanna point out to us, so just want the community to know that, uh, that's where that meeting will occur. The press will be there, I assume, or, uh, of course, are invited, but we won't have live cameras or a Facebook feed from there. And then, of course, this Friday and Saturday are big days for the city of Spencer. Our final three candidates are gonna be running the gauntlet through the interview process. We did a press conference naming them, but I'll just name them again really quick, and if I mispronounce your name, I apologize. Glenn Anderson from Sibley is a finalist. Pam Schmelick from Des Moines is a finalist, and Al Roder from Independence is a finalist. All are currently serving in Iowa cities, Glenn in Sibley, Pam again in Des Moines, and Al in Independence, Iowa. So the public, as we've talked a little bit about before, we wanna make this a, a very transparent process and an open invitation to everyone to participate. From 6:00 to 7:00 PM on Friday, the 20th, this Friday, there will be a public meet and greet for all the candidates and their spouses. Uh, the entire community is welcome, and this will be at the Clay County Heritage Center. Uh, we felt it was appropriate, especially because the 150th anniversary of the community, and there's a big, uh, exhibit down there that talks about the history of Spencer, so we thought that would be a good location for that. If you have any questions, uh, specifically about the process or the schedule or anything like that, please contact City Hall or contact me. I'm happy to get back to you. So, brief overview, uh, Friday, there'll be some informal interviews, uh, as well as formal discussions, but, uh, we'll run that process again on Saturday in a little more organized manner with all the candidates, and then the goal would be by Saturday afternoon, collectively, to have the council be prepared to make an offer to one of the three candidates. And I would just conclude by saying the goal, when we set out, was to, number one, uh, save you all some money by doing an internal process. I asked Jessica for a little bit of an expenditure update, talked about it on my press conference. She anticipates spending about $5,000 in the process. Uh, traditionally, we would have probably spent between 20 and 30,000 with consultants, and the goal was not only to save you money, but not sacrifice the quality of candidates, uh, that we were going to end up with at the end, and I believe, as we hoped for, we're gonna have a very difficult choice with the final three candidates and, um, their communities that they are currently serving in. I'm sure it'll be a, a tough decision, uh, when an offer comes down, but that's selfishly what we wanted, as I stated before. We wanted to find the best candidate possible, and I believe this process has led to three that, uh, can fully function here as our future city manager. Final thing I would have is a thank you to Alec and Anna, as they presented at the Daybreaker Kiwanis Meeting this morning. They talked about floodplains and new maps and all that good stuff, so it's, uh, excellent to see the city staff out and about, participating in discussions with the community. I heard after the presentation, a lot of positive feedback from the members of the club and appreciated their time there, so just wanted to say thank you for doing that. With that, I would entertain any questions you might have. All right. Item 10, council and committee reports. Brian?
As listed, we have a long-term planning committee tomorrow night at 5:30. Um, the regular city council meeting on September 7th. Note that will be Tuesday night because of, um, Labor Day on the 6th, so we'll meet on Tuesday, the 7th at 6:30. Um, new to your agenda there, we will have a finance committee meeting on Monday, August 30th at 9:00 AM here at City Hall, and then also a public works committee on Monday, the 23rd, so a week from tonight, at 6:00 PM. So, and that would be all we have coming up.
Thank you. Any questions for Brian? All right. Item 12, actually 11. I always skip 11. Entertain a motion to approve the bills and claims. First by Bill. He's always first on there. Is there a second? Second? Tracy? Is that you? Or Donovan? Donovan, all right. First by Bill and a second by Tracy to approve the bills and claims. Or Donovan, sorry. First by Bill. We'll get this right in the notes, Teresa. First by Bill, second by Donovan. You're way, way ahead of me here. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Item 12, other business opportunity to address the council. Would anyone like the mic?
My name is Lundy Scaletta, 709 East 12th Street.
Perfect.
Um, just one, just question about the swimming pool. I'm just wondering if there's a way to make a four-season swimming pool. I, I don't know if that'd be, uh, good for the community or not.
Yeah, good question. There's, there's always the, the ability to. It always takes the checkbook to, to write it, to make it, but that's, um, one of the challenges slash opportunities that we have with the completion of the Park Master Plan. A year ago, there was lots of different ideas and possibilities and things of that nature, and I'm sure, I'm sure tonight we'll talk about everything from, uh, do we really need the pool to, hey, if we make a capital investment to improve the facility, what does that look like? So appreciate that suggestion.
Thank you.
Any other people out there who want the microphone? All right. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
First by Donovan.
Second.
Second by Tracy. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Meeting adjourned. Drive safely to the pool.